You know, my my history is incomplete streets, my history is in roadway safety. You know, the more driveway access points through pedestrian areas, the more opportunities there are to create the these unsafe conflict points, right? So between the pedestrians and and the and the and the vehicles. You our concern in Sono is that we are a pedestrian centered environment. And and that's the direction that we want to go in. We see, we believe it's safer to do it. But additionally, our comments to on the development were similar to the comments that we did for the prior application for this location. And that is, you know, our standard. And this that this standard has also been adopted by the Connecticut Department of Transportation and is on all their projects as well. All legs of the intersection need to have a marked crosswalk, right? And we don't have one on the south side of this. And we require that the development would have a marked crosswalk with RRFBs for safe pedestrian accident. We've had pedestrian crashes in this corridor, so it's a very much a concern to us. And if there is a crosswalk, and while there's a legal crosswalk today, it's not a marked crosswalk. If there's a marked crosswalk installed there, it'd be in conflict with the exit driveway. So, you know, we feel strongly that the better operations from the street, right? So I understand that the, you know, we're not looking at the operations of the hotel, right? My job is to look at the operations of the street, right? So we are not prioritizing the operations of the hotel. We're prioritizing pedestrians, you know, in the city. So, you know, that that's where that's where our work has been. The council has challenged TMP to adopt complete streets legislation and a design manual. And once completed with that this year, we are being challenged to complete a vision zero plan for the city. And both of these plans are just going to dictate that we are going to have to do. We can't have business as usual, and we're going to have to look at different ways to do it. And what what are we going to prioritize as as we move forward? So I don't want to rehash all the all the all the items that have been brought up. I think they're clear in our report. You know, it is, from my viewpoint, you know, the 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 we heard from the operator that or from the from the jobber that it could work, you know, it could work better if is through. But it's not that it can't work. And and we see that working in the hotel next door. We see that working in hotels in Stamford. So we believe that that that's there. But still, in all, there are missing points for data that we still need clarification, the operations to make sure there's no queue queuing out onto the street. So I'll leave you to that because I know that you're going to have a very long night. You know, but we have just, you know, a pretty significant concern with the multiple curb cuts in the pedestrian centered environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, Michelle.
Yes, so if you would like to participate in the public hearing portion of this meeting, please use the raise your hand feature and we'll bring you over to speak. If you're dialed in on a phone, please press star nine. So we have one. Lisa, just sit your name and address for the record, please.
Lisa, you're muted.
There we go. Got it. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
OK, great. Hopefully, I'm not on camera. I've been laying here on the sofa, listening to this this discussion. Lisa Britton, 19 Shorefront Park. I'm hearing this hotel application just by chance. I had actually tuned in for the residential parking permit discussion, which I think you are guys are going to have to defer to another another evening, given the lateness of this this particular application. But I wanted to make a few comments as a resident. It's been very surreal watching two hoteliers or developers be on opposing sides of this of this application, or to watch the esteemed legal counsel of Liz and Adam be on opposing sides, or to hear Adam's passionate plea about traffic. Like I said, as a resident, I've often been on the opposite side of a lot of these things. I love historic buildings. All my homes, my residential homes have all been over 100 years old. I currently live in a 1922 or down the street in Shorefront Park. First, let me say, I wish Norwalk could actually allow GGP or demanded the GGP put a hotel in the mall, but that that ship passed, that ship sailed. That being said, at first glance, I like the design of this hotel. Like I said, I just happened to tune in on this because I was looking to to jump in on the the residential permit parking. But I like the look at it. I think it'll bring vibrancy to that into the street. I think those buildings have been empty for years. I drive on Main. The traffic is not that bad. I understand the curb cuts and the two entrance ways, but I trust you guys to work that out. But the the traffic where traffic is a mess is over on Water Street that I drive several times a day. I happen to fear that this is more about the residents in not wanting competition. So you all may be surprised, but I like the idea of another hotel. I think it'll bring customers to the area and vibrancy to the area and the restaurants. We still have a lot of vacant storefronts on Washington Street. And I I like the idea of a hotel rather than apartment. So that's all I have to say about that tonight. Thank you very much.
All right, Michelle, who's next?
I brought over Dana. She just has to unmute.
Thought I did. Let's, can you hear me?
Yes.
Dana Laird, 214 Highland Avenue. I have watched Washington Street change over the years. I'm a lifelong resident. And not that this new design is terrible, but I do not really appreciate how the historic districts are being nibbled away for a hotel or whatever. Because, I mean, it's not George Washington sleep here, but you know, that's it's more, I'll bring back Mr. Schulman's talk about the milieu of the whole neighborhood. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tim Rath. Just have done mute.
Mr. Rath, you're still muted. You're still muted. Can you unmute?
It was unmuted for just a second, and then it muted again for some.
All right, Michelle, let's go to the next one. We'll come back to Mr. Rath.
At the moment, he's the only hand up.
Oh, OK.
So it seems nobody else unless you can unmute.
Give him another minute. Mr. Rath, you're still muted. Can you unmute? You should be able to unmute on the lower left hand side of your computer. OK. Michelle, just explain one more time how people can get on. Let's give this one more shot, see if there's anybody else.
Sure. If you'd like to participate, use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're dialed in on a phone, press star nine and we'll bring you over to speak. That looks like it's it besides Tim, but maybe he could follow up in an email if he has something.
OK, then we will close the public portion of the hearing. And we'll turn it back to Attorney Sachi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission for your time and attention tonight. What I'd like to do is to have the various consultants from our team respond to the questions that relate to their areas of discipline. And then I have some general comments to Attorney Blank's comment to Attorney Blank's statements. And then I have some comments with respect to the petition for intervention and also a summary as to the standards of review that we have applied to this application, which we comply with. Before we go to that, I would like to advise the Commission that there are probably 50 letters of support that have been submitted by our team, should be in the file. Hopefully, they have been submitted to you and you've had an opportunity to read some of them. The letters are from a whole host of individuals, including Police Chief Walsh, The Spinnaker Group Colonial Realty, AGW Sono, multiple restaurants and retail businesses in the area, including Tablau, Public Match, Blind Rhino and Donovan's, La Caie and the Sports House. We also spoke to the owners of 17 South Main, which is directly to the north of 25 South Main. It is owned by Ray and Carl Cook, longtime Norwalk residents, and they have no objection to the application that's presented in the project moving forward. I would like to just read to the into the record three of the letters that we have. And I'll do that very quickly. And then we can have our consultants get ready to make their responses to you in connection with their areas of expertise. The first is by the Sono Baking Company. It stated March 25th. Dear Mr. Schulman, it is a welcomed idea for the new hotel that will only enhance the neighborhood and help drive economic growth, which is so desperately needed. Tom has always built and maintained awesome properties, and his leadership is what we have needed in South Norwalk, as demonstrated with the Marriott Hotel. I fully endorse and highly anticipate another quality hotel and look forward to working on anything Tom is involved in. Our business on Hanford Place has doubled since Tom's Harborside Complex opened. Please consider my endorsement as a business leader of over 20 years here in South Norwalk. Good luck to Tom and let us get this approved as soon as possible. All of South Norwalk needs a boost. And that is signed by John Baricelli, the owner and head baker of Sono Baking. We also have a letter dated April 9th, signed by Brian Griffin, president of Norwalk Chamber. This addressed to Mr. Schulman. I'm writing to express our support for the application regarding the proposed new 100 room hotel in South Norwalk by FD Rich. As evidenced, the neighboring hotel, the Residence Inn by Marriott, has proven to be a welcome and beneficial addition to the neighborhood. And it seems the new hotel would only further enhance and elevate the area and South Norwalk, not to mention the need for more rooms in Norwalk, especially considering the recent closing of the Doubletree Hotel. Thank you for thank you for your and the Commission's consideration. And then a letter from WRF Sono Corp, the William Finger Company, to Mr. Schulman dated March 27th. As a longtime property owner of 64 North Main Street, the AMC Multiplex Theater, I'm writing to express my strong support for the application before you for the proposed new 100 room hotel. The neighboring hotel Residence Inn by Marriott Norwalk has been a beneficial addition to the neighborhood, and the new hotel would further enhance the vibrant South Norwalk community. Thank you in advance for your and the other board members' consideration of my support and for your approval of this exciting addition to South Norwalk. That letter is echoed by many of the other business owners and property owners in the area, and those letters have been submitted to you. At this point, I would appreciate if our consultants could come back on. Perhaps we could start first with Nick Havan to address the traffic concerns and once again, deal with the issues related to the driveway, the drive circulation. And then we could follow with Colin Brothier and Len Dandrea if there were issues that Len had to address. So Nick, you would mind?
Nick, I don't think your audio is working. No, we can't hear you.
We still can't hear you.
Try the volume.
Liz, maybe you want to come back to him, have your other people speak.
That's fine. That's fine. Len, would you mind addressing any concerns from the civil engineering perspective?
All right, excuse me. Sure, on the site distance, Attorney Blank mentioned that our engineer responded back that this was a minor driveway. And I agree with Attorney Blank, it's not a minor driveway as stated or listed in the City of Norwalk roadway standards. However, the site distances on this road, as I spoke of earlier, are fantastic. There's no parking on our side. Looking north, you can see underneath the railroad bridge, you can easily see 516 feet. Looking south, well over 570, taking it all the way to the Hanford Place intersection. So although there appears to be a bit of a typo in our response, we still are meeting the site distance requirements for City of Norwalk for this driveway.
I think that was the only the only area that related to you.
I think so.
OK. Colin, could you address?
Can you hear me?
Questions?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, Brian.
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Pulled off, we'll go to Nick.
OK, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that call. So I would like to thank you, Chairman, to allow me to speak again. I would start with talking about the traffic study that that we've done. The previous speaker from the adjacent ranged pretty much over my study. So I just started with the traffic counts. He mentioned that my traffic counts were patently flawed. That's exactly what he said. And they're dated and taken during COVID. In fact, they were taken on September 9, 2022. And a little lesson on a traffic engineering, because I've been doing this for 45 years. The traffic counts that you take are normally good for three, up to three years. That's according to the, that's the industry standard. You just have to adjust it based on the adjustment factor. So and and we took the traffic counts on Friday specifically because the peak hours of a hotel are Fridays and Saturday. He was correct on the Saturday. But we are very conservative on our study. We took the traffic counts on a Friday. Every land land use has a different dates that they need to be taken. In general, IT requires the traffic counts be taken during the week, depending on the land use. For things like hotels, restaurants, and other things like that, movie theaters. They more are visited during the weekends. People don't just pack up and go taking a hotel on a Tuesday and and check out on a Wednesday. They, in most cases, they do on a Friday or Saturday. And we took, we we use the Saturday, we use the Friday accounts. And and generally, the peak hour for a hotel in the afternoon is spread between 2:00 and 3:00 p.m. But just because we wanted to stay on a conservative side, we took the the most amount of trips generated and applied it to the worst case scenario on a PM hours is to show that the traffic operates properly and it does not impact the traffic. He mentioned about inappropriately shifting traffic volumes to MLK. I just want to remind you, remind him that this is a transit oriented district, design district. A lot of, most of our guests are 50% are are gonna use probably Uber or taxi to come from the train train station. And they're not going to go up to Washington Street and turn left, come down on a on a Martin Luther King Drive. They're just going to take a left on a on a Washington Street and go to directly to Martin Luther King. I'm sorry. They're not going to go northbound on a North Main Street. They're going to take a left on Washington Street. It's, it says it fails it future conditions of the developments. The 0.7% that we do on a background growth factor considers those development. Plus, those three developments that he mentioned, TMP also mentioned those developments. They're not really impact our our site. Their traffic are going different direction. Nobody's going to come from Chestnut Street or or Monroe Street. They're they're going to come and take a left and go on a north on a on a they're going to come and go on a main street. They're just going to use the Martin Luther King Drive. There was one thing else that I I wanted to touch base on it. It was very important, I I other development. And yes, and he mentioned that our our traffic was flawed because we didn't consider what's collected on the COVID time. And we didn't consider COVID upgrade. We have a letter from, I I mean, we we've done a lot of work in in Connecticut. That's majority of the work we do. And in our communications with the Connecticut DOT, when we get this numbers, the background growth factor, I have an email from Gary Sotcha that that says we have not requested any adjustments for COVID-19 since 1/1/2022. That's regardless of what the governor declared that May 11, 2023 was out of the we're we're not in a emergency anymore, COVID emergency. We haven't, we haven't adjusted any counts taken after January 1st, 2022. So that's about my traffic study. Regarding the two benefits, again, I'm just gonna straight go into the benefits of two accesses. It reduces the conflict points between pedestrians and vehicles when you have separate driveways. Because the pedestrians does not have to cross a 24 feet wide road, basically, or driveway, looking both sides of its shoulders to making sure that no cars entering, no cars exiting. It's a quick 12 foot. And and they're concentrated in cars entering. And then they're they'll concentrate on the car exiting on the other side. That is eliminating several conflict points between vehicles and and cars. It provides much smoother operation for Uber drivers and everyone. They don't have to go into the to the site and make a K turn or or X turn, you know? It's, it does not gridlock the garage. And and it doesn't, the queues are not extended to the street on South Main. They just got to go in and and park, give the keys to the valet people. And when they're ready to leave, they give their keys to the concierge inside the hotel. And while they're taking their elevators down, the car is going to be waiting for them and they can just leave. So and and attorney, I'm sorry, I I'm really bad with names. The attorney for the adjacent, I first name Adam, sorry about that, Adam. Mentioned that there's going to be cars parked. There's a parking, that's a drop off zone. The people enter the 24 feet wide aisle length. And that's a standard again for for a parking design. The vehicles enter as they leave the car. That's where they park. They 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 had shown like four cars parked there. That's not all the time park, you know, they, it's a drop off zone. They they exit. So again, it's a lot much safer and beneficial to everyone to have two two accesses rather than one. I think I I've beaten this case so many, so many ways. So I'm going to pass it on to the call and I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. I didn't pick that there was got a plan up or rendering. Everybody got that? You got the right window?
We can see it.
Awesome. I think there were not so many architectural comments. Generally, that seemed to be an acceptable part of the presentation. But what I did pick up on our, there was some discussion from BFJ on the the horizontal differentiation in the building. And you know, I think that's a we think that we've defined the building relatively well with a base, a middle and a top section for the two primary facades. The 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 recessive facade, the third facade that you can see furthest to the left there, which is the fiber cement paneling, is really intended to to recede and kind of be this bridge between the two the two main hotel buildings, right? So that's supposed to kind of blend into the background and be a supporting character rather than the star of the show. It is a little bit left to the left of the terminating vista of Havilland Street. We've maintained a traditional rhythm for the windows and sizing in proportion. So we're we're alluding to those traditional forms and materials that are used. We'd really like that to be something that's panelized and update updated a little bit more of a modern intervention, bringing some new materials to the neighborhood, which are happening in other locations further south on South Main Street with the Penn Monroe Street development and also with the with the platform. And we literally have hundreds of multifamily units where fiber cement has been used in downtown locations that are successful and it's maintainable and are relatively durable material. Selecting a good quality panel plays into that a lot. And we would likely use a a good quality fiber cement due just to the size of the jointing needed here on this project. So it's a good material. It gets us the aesthetic that we're looking for. And we think it's appropriate in this this limited use on the facade. Aside from that, there's really not any other materials on the major facades of the building that are not masonry or some sort of durable cast stone veneer. So main facade is is brick and and cast stone, as is the other one, which is a striated brick facade with a with a cast entablature and then a brick veneer up above. And there is a lot of articulation in the in the facade of the central mass. It's got recessed brick spandrel panels between the windows with brick sills and soldier course headers. The pileasters are proud. You can see that defined pretty well in this image that I've got up on the screen. So there is a lot of horizontal play in the building as well as vertical play. So you'll get some nice shadow lines, which what does what doesn't always capture in the renderings quite so well. And you can see it if you go on South Main Street or onto the Chestnut Street, where we just completed the platform a couple of years ago, is the the depth of the the brick veneer does add additional character to those windows. And as long as the the mutton bars are on the outside of the glazing, then you do get a lot of shadow lines and character to the building that really adds that depth of urban character that I think everybody is looking for. Recessing the the lobby windows a little bit more so that it's not quite as flat as depicted in the in the rendering is a relatively easy thing for us to do and would probably add a little bit more depth and maybe give. And would probably add a little bit more depth and maybe give the peer reviewer a little bit more comfort. So that would be something that we could do that to add just a little bit more pop and would probably happen. Anyway, as part of the documentation process and likewise, I'll speak to the to the volume on the right. Which is which is the, you know, a flatter brick facade with. More of a punched window, again, the depth of the brick is gonna give us several inches of reveal. As well as the profile of the windows, so there's gonna be a little bit more there in reality than gets represented in the digital rendering. When it's built and constructed and you can see that just from from looking at the buildings that have recently been done. So I I think we're answering all of their concerns. In in an appropriate way and. Where there's little tweaks, we're we're happy to make those, so hopefully that'll. That'll speak to the architectural items that are in question, but from what I heard, there really wasn't a ton, so I'm happy to yield to. Some of the other questions on traffic unless somebody has specific questions on the the architecture.
Thank you, Colin, at this point, Mr. Devonshire, would you please come on and respond to some of the commentary with respect to your analyses?
Sure, thank you for this opportunity. Just to step back. When I was contacted by the rich company to investigate these buildings. First, the Ullman Building and more recently the McMahon. They were hoping and and they expressed to me what the possibilities might be, what I could determine. What the possibilities might be for reusing these facades, for reusing portions of the facades. And. I approached it the way that I approach most historic preservation projects, you know, as I said, I have an architectural firm. In New York City, we presently have forty seven projects on the books that are all historic preservation projects. So. We have a good amount of experience in the in the forensics of historic preservation. Interestingly, Mr. Haynes. Mentioned a couple of organizations that actually used to come to us and still do come to us. For their forensic information, so it's nice that he was able to spectate those things and and gather some information. In any case. With regard to the Ullman Building. In in Wes's report, he mentions evidence of jacking from corroded steel. Is a typical condition of buildings of this era and unfortunately. What he seemed to miss is that the the jacking wasn't just at the window openings. Those those lintels extended the length of the facade, which means that all of the brick above each of those lintels. Is going to have to be removed in order to either replace or repair those lintel. In doing that, the brick will be destroyed and in the end, what we will have is. An entirely new facade on that building, the history of that building will be lost, it will be abstract. It will be a story somewhere not embodied in that building whatsoever. This is a perfect case of destroying the building in order to save it. With regard to the McMahon Building. You know, that was his his forensic examination was one paragraph in the in the Ullman Report. And one paragraph in the report for the McMahon Building. He refers to. The. Lintels of the upper street facing windows, the lintels of the upper street facing windows are totally. A bogus reconstruction of nothing that ever existed on that building. And I would posit to you. That the because of the number of changes that have taken place to the McMahon Building, if that building were to come up. Before the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission for Designation, it would not be designated. The changes have been too egregious, the work has been too slapdash. Again, he mentioned the stucco and and my ability to have X ray vision, in fact. If you know about new stucco systems, you know that it's. Applied to metal lathe, that metal lathe has to be attached to the substrate somehow. And it's usually done with metal anchors and those metal anchors are spaced about eight inches apart. So that if they were even able to remove that stucco. What would be left is a pockmarked, if it wasn't already completely destroyed, a pockmarked stucco facade. On that building, which would require complete replacement, so. It it's unfortunate. That the Ullman Building did not receive the amount of maintenance that it should have or the proper maintenance. So that what he referred to was a very well built building became such a mess and that was confirmed by Don Friedman. Who's one of the preeminent structural engineers in the historic preservation field. And and the McMahon Building, which again. Nothing that would be left on the facade of that building would embody the original history. Or the later history of that building, save for the punched window openings. It would be unlikely that Mr. McMahon would even recognize that building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devonshire, I'd like to next call Kristen Sokic of Pro Park. There were some questions relative to the parking management plan, the valet system, and he was would be able to. Speak to those issues since he is very familiar with it, not only in his. In his occupation at at Pro Park, but with the. Exists at Marriott in Stanford and the system that exists next door, Kristen.
Hi, good evening, Kristen Sokic. Pro Park Mobility, I've been in the parking management field for over thirty years, managed. Four to five hundred locations throughout the New York, New Jersey, Connecticut area. Large portfolio of hotels, universities, hospitals, residential, commercial, municipal. Commuter and transportation. It was brought up earlier that during the peak. That there would be somewhere close to seventy. Ingress and egress vehicles coming out in and out of this parking facility at one time. And that this would be a major cause of concern. In terms of the number of movements and congestion. What I'd like to say about that is I don't think the individual who made that comment was taking into account that. Right there on the main floor, there's twenty six spaces to work with. And because this is a hotel. We will typically know in advance when people are coming and when people are going, so you know, we're gonna be working hand in hand with hotel management. They're gonna let us know the number of arrivals that are scheduled to come in that day. We're gonna know from the people who already arrived, what days are gonna leave, they're gonna be leaving, we'll know in advance. What time, if they don't tell us in advance, they have the capability to text us. In advance so that their car is waiting for them when they come down to the waiting area. So. Based on the fact that these two vehicle elevators are only operating either going one floor down or one floor up. That makes for a quick retrieval time, any car that's already staged. On that main floor on the ground level, literally, you know, it's gonna take seconds, not even minutes. To retrieve that car or stage the car temporarily on that level before it gets either taken up or down. To some of the other levels. And then. Just in general, I've been doing this thirty years, this has got to be one of the most efficient. Methodologies to park cars that there is in a hotel environment. You've got one in, one out, that alleviates all concerns about. Either a driver or a valet doing K turn in the garage, doing a U turn in the garage. Pulling in to a dead end area. It alleviates pinch points, so you know, in a two way configuration, you've got that bend there that would take you out onto the street. That's a pinch point and and cars, they turn wide. You know, there's a potential for accidents there, there's gonna be pedestrians. Walking in this area and you're gonna have valets operating in this area, you're gonna have. Ubers and DoorDash folks coming in this area, but one way traffic flow. Immensely helps this type of parking operation, like I said, I've been parking, I'm not just a manager of parking. I've actually parked cars from the time I was in college. Through the the course of my thirty year career. And this is a very, very efficient way to do it, it keeps the traffic moving. It keeps the queuing, you've got the largest amount of queuing. I forget who it was that was speaking earlier that was talking about. That, you know, you could you could drop the car off or do the K turn in right in front of the elevator. That's impossible during a peak period, you know, that elevator area is gonna have cars coming in and out of that area constantly. To to say that an Uber driver or somebody pulling in on their own is gonna do a U turn or a K turn there is just a recipe for disaster. I can't speak strongly enough about what. A total improvement this scenario is for traffic flow, for people getting in and out of their car. For the experience of arriving and departing, not just for hotel guests, but everybody that's going in and through this space. It's just gonna be a much more elegant. And 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 just a more orderly experience versus coming into a dead end. Having people, either the valets or the public doing K turns, U turns, not being able to move forward. Not having the amount of queuing that you that you have here. And yeah, I I just I just think the, from my experience as a parking operator. That this makes the most sense versus any other scenario that I could think of.
Thank you, Mr. Sokic, could I now ask Todd Lindvall, who is the manager at the Marriott Stamford? He can share some comments on the existing situation there and how this will improve that situation. Todd, you might be unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize for that, yeah, I'm Todd Lindvall, the the area general manager. For the courtyard and the Residence Inn by Marriott Stamford Downtown Hotels, I know they've been mentioned a few times this evening. We opened the courtyard in two thousand and five and the Residence Inn in two thousand and eighteen with a shared parking garage. Utilization of those garage, those spaces is just over fifty percent for our hotel guests currently. The hotel project, this hotel particular project that we're looking at today. Will operate very similar to my properties as it relates to the design of the car elevators and the twenty four hour valet operation. Although we are very successful, one of our operational challenges is with the arrival and departures. And that is because we don't have the ability to exit the Porticus here. As it relates to pickups, drop offs, Ubers, taxis and deliveries. As we only have one way entrance forcing vehicles once they do enter that area to do that three point turn. Backing up traffic, this can cause an entrance delay backing up traffic down the street. The design of this project that we're looking at with the entrance and exit would eliminate any backup. And would be much more efficient providing a better traffic flow, I know Tammy had mentioned. Earlier, you know, what would happen, you know, if a limousine pulls in there, well, you know, it would be a challenge. So much so that our properties in Stanford, we were in fact trying to purchase. The property adjoining the courtyard to create that exit onto Broad Street to eliminate that backup that you have. By not having that second exit, because we don't have that, so. We were going to purchase the property next door to create an exit onto Broad Street, unfortunately, we were unable to secure that property, so now. We're dealing with the the operation with just an entrance only, but what what a difference it takes to have that exit. I've been doing this for for running hotels for over thirty five years and I would. Disagree with most of the comments that Frank Fish made this evening as it relates to hotel operations. And I just want to thank you all for your time, I'm here if you have any questions about the operation and just can't stress enough. About how critical that exit will be for eliminating traffic and the flow of the whole operation and the safety for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Lindl, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you at this point, I'd like to commence my rebuttal testimony. Rebuttal comments, I will try to keep them as brief as possible and hopefully not duplicate some of the comments that were made. But before I do that, I don't know if Mr. Rich has anything else that he would like to add or just allow me to move forward.
I'd like to just have a minute or two. I I wanna thank everybody for their patience, it's been a long night with a lot of testimony and Liz, you're gonna close. But I I just wanna say a couple of things. One thing that you guys should all remember tonight, when you go home and you think about what was said. It was the first thing that Adam Blank said in all of this. Is that he doesn't want competition. That's really what's behind all of this, I have no doubt that Mr. Goslin. Mr. Hayes and Mr. Bryant are devout preservationists and I can appreciate that. Having owned most of Washington Street end to end. And been the steward for that historic district. For sixteen years, having lived in a National Register House myself, one of the most important houses in Connecticut. Marion Castle, look it up, great place. Having helped save the Avon Theater in downtown Stanford where I found Chuck Royce, the buyer, who made it into the cultural gem that it is today. Having bought the post office on Atlantic Street so that it could be saved and incorporated into the Atlantic Station project, this is my thing. I love old buildings, so I really appreciate. Mr. Goslin and Mr. Mr. Hayes, Haynes and and Mr. Bryant's mission. But I can tell you, their client doesn't care about their mission, he told you that. He said he doesn't care about historic buildings, he said it. What he cares about is keeping out competition. And that is just really un-American if you ask me, I wanna open a restaurant across the street. And so the restaurant that's there is gonna try to do whatever they can to keep me out, I wanna build an apartment house nearby. The apartment owner across the street is gonna say, uh uh uh, not on my watch, you can't do that, that's un-American, unfair, has nothing to do with zoning. Couple more things and I'm gonna hand it to Liz. I'm not gonna come back and do some bait and switch on the elevators and that's not what we did at the Residence Inn. Which we designed and which is a fully operated valet garage right now. A hundred and two keys, when the building is operating at its peak period, it's a valet operated garage, just like we wanna do, there's no difference, so. This notion that, oh, we need to prove that it's going to work, blah blah, just look next door, the building's been in business for five years. It's a valet operated garage and it works beautifully. The only difference is that site is thirty percent larger. We have fourteen thousand feet, that site's twenty one thousand feet, I think that's about thirty percent, so we were able to put ramps in there. Which was a more effective solution, very expensive solution, by the way, but we put the ramps in there, so we're not gonna come back and say, oh. Geez, we now want to eliminate the car elevators and have no parking, that isn't gonna happen, we can't run the hotel without parking. And that was said by Mr. Blank, that we did some sort of bait and switch and watch out, we're gonna do it again, my final comment. Is the best route for historic preservation of this district. Is commercial, responsible commercial development that is going to bring bodies in to the historic district to spend money. I ran again, Washington Street for sixteen years, oh my God, I had no idea what I was getting into. The revolving door of tenants there was insane. It's still very fragile, incredibly fragile. And we need commercial development like the platform, like the new building that's happening across from the police station that Spinnaker's doing. Like the Sono Pearl that we did, Harborside Sono that we did, Iron Works that Spinnaker did, the Resonance Inn that we did. Not this buyer that owns it and all of a sudden is the guru about Sono, we built that. And we're gonna build this new one with your blessing. So I hope you see what's going on here, this is all a smokescreen. Thank you very much for your time, everybody, and Liz, I hand it off to you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom, a few things that I'd like to to address and then I would like to address the petition for intervention and also then the stand. Uh, a few things that I'd like to, to address, and then I would like to address the petition for intervention and also then the standards. First of all, with respect to Mr. Fresh, Mr. Fish, I hope that you, Mr. Schulman, and Mr. Fish's counterpart, Mr. Jacques Mar, received our response to their, um, the BFJ memo today. We received their memo of April third, we then received their memo today of April sixteen, dated April sixteenth. But the memo today didn't seem to acknowledge the discussion and information that we've shared over the past two hours of discussion with BFJ over the past week. So we hope that the letter that I submitted today that identifies and, uh, all of the, and outlines all of the responses is in your file and you will consider it as you move forward. Um, we keep talking about the design guidelines and we don't comply with the design guidelines. Well, I have to tell you, the design guidelines are suggestive in nature. Words are important when you consider zoning regulations, words are important. The guidelines are crafted with the let, with the word should, not must, not shall, but should. That's a suggestive term and it means that you are encouraged to abide by these regulations. They are regulations that look to improve what you are present, presenting, but they're not mandatory and they shouldn't be taken that way. Uh, I think there's been an upset about how the valet can work, whether it's by, um, Mr. Havon or Mr. Sokic or Mr. Lindvall. But again, we believe that this is a more efficient way to bring guests into the hotel, get them parked, get the cars out and move along. It will not result in backups on South Main Street, that just isn't going to happen. But if you have a one-way in and out, one drive, there's going to be a problem in the back. There are just too many things going on, too many pinch points and narrowness and maneuvers that are not going to be able to work consistently, conveniently, and efficiently. It also impacts the facade of the building. I think everyone will agree that the building is a lovely facade. It has three separate distinct components. And if we move, we, we remove one, it impacts what that building is going to look like, and I don't think anyone wants to see that. Um, furthermore, many who spoke tonight, both from Attorney Blank's group and from our group, acknowledge that this is a low-generating, low-traffic generating hotel. We're not going to be generating the kinds of numbers that I think, uh, Attorney Blank said there's going to be these massive backups on Washington Street, that's just not going to happen. We're just, that's just not true. Um, let me see, going through my notes. As, uh, Mr. Rich mentioned, and he kind of stole my thunder, but that's perfectly fine. This is all about competition. That's the first line that Attorney Blank said to you. We, we, we don't want it. With this will negatively impact the Residence Inn, and that is not a consideration for a zoning board to either approve or deny an application. BFJ says the, the valet system will work. Our, our consultants say the valet system will work. One thing that I should mention to you very, and you should really look at this, is, uh, Attorney Blank referenced a traffic peer review for this project. There was none. You as a commission did not require traffic peer review. He was showing you a traffic peer review for a project at two seventy-two to two eighty Main Avenue, which is the, the old Alenko site. That has nothing to do with this, so it's, his commentary on the peer review is completely irrelevant and must be discounted. It's just a wrong study and not in any way related to this project. Um, the comment that we didn't consider the other developments, Nick Havon indicated that they were considered and included in the seven percent background. As far as the Webster Street Parking Lot and TMP's contemplation that we should have included that, there's been no application, to my knowledge, filed for the Webster Street Parking Lot. So any application or evaluation is purely speculative and is, is inappropriate to be considered for this, at this time. Um, the Residence Inn loading space, Attorney Blank continued to mention that it's our loading space, it's going to impact our loading. That's not an exclusive loading space for the Residence Inn in front of its building. It's an open two parking spaces that has a fifteen-minute limitation on parking. That loading is available to anyone on that street and will continue to be. Um, Attorney Blank went into great depth about the traffic analysis that his consultant provided. And he didn't want, then he explained or tried to analyze what it all meant. I submit to you that that is, that should be completely irrelevant in your consideration. He's not a traffic engineer, he's not a traffic expert. You should rely on the information that their traffic expert provided in the report that they submitted. And if they wanted to bring their traffic expert in to further articulate what he meant, they should have done that. But Attorney Blank's evaluation and analysis of the traffic report is inappropriate for you to consider. Uh, the operating plan, we submitted an operating plan with the initial application in February. For some reason or another, perhaps it was misplaced, but the same operating plan that was submitted in February was resubmitted. Um, as far as the, uh, valet parking, excuse me, the waiver of parking, instead of the one-to-one ratio, we're asking for something less. That waiver has been requested in the application, it's set forth in it, it's set forth in the narrative, and we have been, my, we have, um, addressed that again in the information that was provided to staff earlier this week. There has been discussion about how this encouraging preservation, how it's necessary, and as Mr. Rich said, we don't disagree with that. But it, encouraging that preservation is not the same as mandating it. And based upon the comments that Mr. Devonshire shared with you and his report and analyses of those two buildings, preservation of those structures is not appropriate. Moreover, thirty-one thirty-five South Main Street has already been evaluated, and that's a moot point now. The State Historic Preservation Office has determined that it need not go further. Their investigation closed last year, so discussion about thirty-one thirty-five South Main is misplaced at this point and deserves no further discussion by this commission. If you're going to discuss anything, it should be twenty-five South Main, and that, if the condition of that building has been clearly identified as not worth saving by Mr. Devonshire. Attorney Blank talked about the Plan of Conservation and Development and how, uh, there, it's, there are various, um, statements in that plan that militate toward your not looking favorably upon this application. Well, just as he can cherry pick a phrase from the Plan of Conservation and Development, I also call your attention to the, to the executive summary on page eight, which says, states that economic and redevelopment initiatives can transform the urban core and older industrial areas. That's exactly what this is doing. And keep in mind that the Plan of Conservation and Development is an advisory document only. It is not the mandated document that you must abide by, those are the zoning regulations, and we comply with the zoning regulations. Um, Attorney Blank, on behalf of his client, then talks about the enorm- enormous asset, that this is a cohesive district. And if granted, it would be the end of the district. Well, again, we call your attention to the fact that just last year, his client knew about, consented to, and supported the demolition of thirty thirty-five, thirty-one to thirty-five South Main Street. It was part of their application that Mr. Rich presented and you approved. So now to say that the, the removal of that from the street is going to be just the death of the street is just completely misplaced. Furthermore, his client, in a letter to Mr. Rich, after the deal did not come to fruition, he indicated, and I quote, "I wish you guys the best with whatever direction you end up going with next door." I don't think anything could be more clear that, that Attorney Blank's clients really didn't have any, in, any interest in historic preservation, and now their only interest is keeping out competition. Uh, as far as, uh, comments from Mr. Travers, I appreciate their position, I appreciate the comments they, they provided. But we just got their letter yesterday. We met with them yesterday afternoon, discussed their comments. We got a letter from them yesterday at six P M. after having our application in their hands for sixty-four days and following three attempts by me to get comments on the application. So I, that letter comes really at, beyond the eleventh hour. And we're talking about one more curb cut that seems to be problematic. Again, the redevelopment guidelines and other guidelines do not mandate that you shall not have any more curb cuts. It's a, it's a suggestion that they would prefer not to have anymore. But this is just one more added, and for the reasons that everyone has suggested tonight by our team, one more curb cut is not going to be problematic to pedestrians or to motorists. Furthermore, the standards that Mr. Travers is talking about, he's already admitted to, are not standards that have been adopted, they haven't gone through the vetting process. They're standards that they're thinking about and recommendations are, are, they are just recommendations at this point. And I think there is more than sufficient information and testimony to you that militate against removing one curb cut and making this a single entrance-only methodology for this, this, um, application. One interesting thing, this is the first time I think that it, Lisa Britton and I actually agree on something. So I was actually delighted to hear Ms. Britton come up. Now for the petition for intervention. I want to remind the commission that the petitioner is the owner of the Residence Inn immediately adjacent to the south. The petitioner applied for and received with TR Sono Assistance approval last year by this commission to expand the hotel by eighty, forty-eight rooms with the acquisition of thirty-one thirty-five South Main. The petitioner participated in the design of that expansion, was fully aware of the intended demolition of thirty-one thirty-five South Main to accomplish it, was aware of the local historical commission review and the State Historic Preservation Office investigation. And for whatever reason, the deal fell through. But now, despite all of the foregoing knowledge, consent, and participation, petitioner purportedly is concerned about the demolition of the two structures as they may unreasonably impair or destroy the public trust in these resources. This is nothing but a subterfuge that strains credibility. It's anti-competition shrouded in concern for preservation. And competition, as I said before, is not a valid consideration for approval or denial of an application. So please don't be misled or confused by this, and I'm confident you will see through it. As for the petition, you need to, as Attorney Blank indicated, determine if the activity is reasonably likely to unreasonably adversely affect the public trust in a natural resource, in a natural resource. We submit that it will not, not, based upon the following analysis and information provided by Michael Devonshire. One, thirty thirty-five South Main has already been reviewed and, and approval to obtain a demolition permit is still valid. Mr. Devonshire concluded that the building was devoid of the spirit or mood of the time. The main facade is hidden by layers of paint which concealed a plethora of deficiencies and problems. Restoration attempts will reveal significant damage and deterioration of the limestone trim and inappropriate brick elements. Cracks in the limestone elements were prominent, likely requiring substantial repair or replacement. And the forensic reality is that since such significant replacement will be required, minuscule authenticity will remain. And here's a quote from the report he submitted to you last year. "The appropriate interventions necessary to retain the building to its originally, original or even historically acceptable appearance will result in a building highly compromised and totally lacking in historic architectural integrity." The State Historic Preservation, Preservation Office considered the demolition request and closed its investigation, did not pursue additional action. As to twenty-five South Main, Mr. Devonshire in the report that's been submitted concluded that much renovation has occurred over twenty years, alteration of the main facade cladding, removal of original storefronts, replacement with less articulated windows and glass, replacement of doors and windows, and the work done on the stucco is all problematic. And he quote, and I quote from his report, "With exception of the street metal cornice, all of the original features of the main facade have been removed and the present treatment is a pastiche of awkward design, poorly executed. The loss of the historical integrity of the facade is lamentable and restoration is not possible. Only reconstruction of historic features. With the exception of the original extant cornice, nothing of historical value remains on the facade." As for the applications before you, you have a special permit and a coastal area management application. We have submitted our documents and in our moving papers, we have identified all of the standards of review for a special permit and the Coastal Area Management Act. The density and, and density and bulk of the buildings, the building meets all of the setback height and coverage requirements, stable traffic flow, there's been ample information that this is a low-generating traffic use. And Mr. Havon has identified that the traffic will not be, uh, the levels of service will not degrade at the local intersections. The site is, um, served by the Norwalk Transit District Wheel Buses Route nine, ten, eleven, and twelve on either South Main Street or directly in front of the hotel or within several walking blocks of the site. The site is completely served by all utilities and will continue to be, will continue to be. There will be no adverse impact for noise, odor, fumes, dust, and artificial lighting. Once the hotel is constructed, if it is approved by you, perhaps there will be some, um, con- typical construction concerns, but those will be managed by Mr. By Mr. Rich and his contractor. Size and design will be in harmony with the neighborhood and complying with the city zoning regulations for signage. All signage will comply with the regulations. Adequacy of yards and open space, yards and open space meet the zoning requirements of the Washington Street Design District. Impact on neighboring properties as compared to uses and structures permitted. There will be no impact and it is completely consistent with the multifamily dwellings, retail stores, personal service shops, bakeries, offices, banks, restaurants, museums, theaters, and auditoriums in the neighborhood. Existing land use in the area, this is consistent with the hotel directly next door, offices, the police department, boutique manufacturing, multifamily residential, retail, railroad, restaurant, the list goes on. Proximity of community facilities, well, nothing could be more proximate than the Maritime Center, Veterans Memorial Park, AMC Theaters, and Ryan Park. Compliance with the Code of Plan of Development, we submit to you that this is compliant with the Code of Plan and Development for the reasons I said, said forth before. Conservation of wetlands, watercourses, and other ecologically viable lands, there are no inland wetlands or watercourses on the site, and the property is sufficiently distant from the coastal resource, namely the Norwalk River, and separated by streets, curbs, sidewalks, and developed properties, so the development of this site will not adversely impact the Norwalk River. Lastly, there are no zoning violations on the property. We submit to you that this application complies with your regulations in all component parts, that the petition for intervention is nothing more than a subterfuge for, for a desire not to have competition and that you should discard it. And even if you do decide to approve the, grant the petition for intervention, the application itself should be approved for all the reasons set forth and all the testimony provided. If you have any further questions of me, I'm happy to answer them, but that concludes my presentation.
Uh, are there any, uh, questions for Attorney Suchi?
I have a question. I think, uh, one of the things that was raised that I didn't hear addressed in the, uh, response to, to comments was about the ADA, uh, parking spaces. Um, uh, I believe there was a discrepancy between two versus four. Uh, I, I don't know if you all had, had a response to that, maybe I, maybe I missed it.
Uh, Commissioner Bryce, I don't believe we responded to that. That is a building department, a building department issue for the state building code and in the application of the federal ADA guidelines. But if that's an issue, we, we certainly would not be able to get a building permit without the requisite number of ADA compliant parking spaces.
Thank you. And I think another, um, component was about the, uh, cornice. I think our, uh, peer reviewers spoke about this, but, um, I believe, I'm, uh, sorry for getting names. I don't see them on the screen right now. Um, but the, the member from your team, uh, who did the historical assessment, I think Mr. Devonshire, uh, had mentioned that the, the cornice on twenty-five Main could possibly be, uh, preserved and/or reused, that, uh, it, it, you know, may be fragile, but there may be, uh, an ability to reuse that. Um, is there an, an ability to integrate that into the architectural designer into this building?
We had discussed that briefly, um, I did with Colin Grothier and also Sealan Potter of Beinfield Architecture. If it can be removed and it can be saved, there is, uh, there have been discussions about somehow integrating that perhaps into the back of the building so that it can be reused and viewed again.
Gotcha. I, I think, you know, not, I'm not, but, uh, you know, i- if it could be on the front of the building, um, especially maybe on that, like, yellow brick section, it seems like it may, uh, fit there. It'd be nice for folks to be able to see it from the street frontage.
We can certainly take that under advisement and see if that's something that can be accommodated.
Sure, appreciate that. Um, the other thing that, uh, I think TMP had raised is with the southern driveway would, um, prevent the ability for a sidewalk to go in, or sorry, a crosswalk to go in place. Um, is there a proposal of like how you would accommodate a crosswalk with the, the southern driveway?
I don't have an answer to that, that I'm not sure. I can't answer that.
Okay. Um, I think that's, uh, I think that's all I had. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, um, we are not going to, uh, close, uh, the, uh, public hearing. Um, uh, this is, uh, within the, uh, uh, Sono Design District. As a result, uh, the redevelopment agency, uh, needs to, uh, comment on the project as well, and we have not yet uh, received their comments. So we're going to hold, um, this hearing open, um, on, uh, at least until uh, we, um, have had an opportunity to receive and review, uh, the comments of the redevelopment agency. So Attorney Suchi, um, uh, will probably need to be getting together again, uh, on this, um, uh, project. In the meantime, um, if there are any unanswered, um, uh, questions or unresolved issues, uh, with TMP, um, um, you now have some, uh, additional time to work those, uh, work those. you now have some additional time to work those work those through.
So maybe I'm I'm a little unclear as to what what can and can cannot happen if the public comment has closed and we have concluded.
We have not. We have not. We have not, as I said, received the comments of the redevelopment agency.
I I understand that and you you have you have to receive those before you can act. But does the does your holding the hearing open also continue the public comment portion of it since you've closed that?
Oh, no, it does not.
I just wanted to understand.
No, I understand and I would understand your anxiety about that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all for your time.
Okay. Thank you all. I'm sorry, Mr. Rich, did you want to say something? I just saw you waving.
Just saying thank you very much. I'm sorry for for waving. Excuse me.
That's okay. It is indeed late. We had some other items on the agenda. Jim Travers has been soldiering on with us here throughout the evening. I would hate to have to ask him to come back. So if the commission is willing, I would at least like to have conversation of the residential parking permits. Is everybody okay with that?
I would just like to pull that and come back and put it first on the agenda. I understand. I appreciate that Mr. Travers stayed. I stayed too primarily for this discussion. But I think at this late hour, it's a little.
Well, I'm not. I I'm not suspecting that this is going to be a long conversation, so I'm going to ask Jim if he's comfortable coming back or if you prefer to discuss it now.
I I could I could do two things and give you shorts. I will be very brief. I I want to be as brief. Trust me as you do. So happy to always come back at any point in time. I think, you know, in short, currently, the the ordinance doesn't allow the parking authority, the ability to do a residential parking zone. It doesn't allow them the ability to do enforcement beyond the metered parking zones that that is given. The item is currently had a discussion with the Parking Authority Board with the administration, their meeting to move this forward and to to have the council create an ordinance that would give the 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 parking authority the legal ability to to do that. And once we have the legal ability to do that, we can we can design how the program would look. But there's just not a legal mechanism in order to do it today. The 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 ordinance is is too restrictive. And we are looking at advancing the parking authority to have the ability to do citywide enforcement. Once they have the ability to do citywide enforcement, they'd have the ability to create a residential parking zone.
Have you drafted the recommended ordinance for the committee? What steps have you taken and what are the next steps?
Well, the steps that are going right now is the 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 so we have to understand, I'm the liaison to the parking authority for the city. We have a parking authority. That's that. That's that's the ultimate entity. The Parking Authority Leadership Board has had a conversation with the mayor. Those conversations are continuing about what that'll look like. And then direction will be given to the ordinance committee to 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 enact changes into the ordinance. We are looking at what a draft would be for that and having conversation with the head of the ordinance committee. But it would be the ordinance committee that would ultimately do the the.
So the Parking Authority Board has shared a draft with the head of the ordinance committee?
The the with the mayor. We haven't made it.
With the mayor?
Yes.
Okay. And Brian Lutz was hired mid-September and in October. You made a comment that he was researching best practices for residential parking programs. What has he found out and can his findings be shared publicly?
Yeah. So I think that the 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 information that we found out is pretty consistent through the the organization to do it. There's an application process that would be delivered. A certain amount of residents on a street would have to would have to sign off on an application process to even be started. Once the application process starts, the investigation would take place on to determining the actual need of of the parking. And then, you know, if the you if if everything goes into play, then then and and there's a warrant, the residential parking place permit would be or program would be enacted for a particular street. You know, as long as it is, you know, the the people that actually live on the street are the people who are requesting it.
Is this a zoning matter at all?
I'm sorry.
Galen, at this point, it sounds to me as if it's a council matter.
Yeah, it's not a zoning matter.
No. It's a matter.
It's a council and a parking authority matter.
Exactly.
I'll share my opinion that it is a zoning matter because we have an East Norwalk Transit Oriented Development Project that was in many ways part and parcel of including residential parking permits and we have buildings going up under that.
Well, I never heard about it when I was when we passed the.
You can check page one hundred and four of the Norwalk Transit Oriented Development Plan. I'd add that it was also in the twenty-twelve, twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-two T M P plans, but again, that's outside of zoning. But it was a key recommendation of the East Norwalk T O D plan. And I know I wasn't on zoning then, but one of the main reasons that as a resident, I supported the East Village T O D was because of the inclusion of a recommendation for a residential parking pass program. So in and and I I agree with you that it's not, you know, there's no application. There's no zoning regulation attached to it. But as it relates to buildings going up under East Norwalk T O D, that it's years later and we've made the amount of progress or lack of progress that there is, I do think is a zoning general concern, and that's why I pushed to have Mr. Travers join us to talk about it. And I appreciate you coming and what you've shared with us so far. I really do.
No, okay. But I I would and I just so. But if if there's a building going up, they're actually they're still residents, so they would be they would qualify for a residential parking zone. Residential parking zones are really enacted when there's a major traffic generator that's creating opportunities for people who live outside the neighborhood to that that would come in maybe for work or you know, that drive that. That's typically not, not just because there's a a building being.
I wonder why it was a key recommendation of this plan that was all about new buildings and commercial activity and all of this.
I don't think it was.
But if you look at it.
Frankly, because I was here when that when it was passed. If it was in page one oh four, it was not.
Well, the the reason it was, one of the reasons it was put in was because there was concern voiced about spillover from other uses and other areas onto the residential streets. That was the impact that the people who lived on those streets weren't able to actually park on their streets because of spillovers for for other reasons. So that was one way to potentially address that was to figure out who was parking there and why and then come up with the permit program.
Yeah. And I'm looking to see that move forward unless there's been a a change and we no longer feel that that's. I mean, it was adopted into the P O C D. It just seems like something that it's not even unfinished. It's not started. So.
So I agree with you. I think we I think we should. I think we should definitely look into and probably enact the residential parking zone. It just as we looked into it and understanding, we we are our hands are tied or the parking authorities' hands are tied and with an inability to do it without an ordinance change. So the first conversation was really about the Parking Authority Board. And then the Parking Authority Board did meet with the mayor. Those those conversations are advancing and we're moving forward to a plan to have the ordinance committee enact it.
Wonderful. We look forward to seeing that or I look forward to seeing that. I speak for myself.
I have a quick question on this subject before you go. So this question is for Steve. So when you say spillover from like certain events, I mean, like let's say we'll use the Oyster Festival as an example. How, you know, people from outside communities like to come into Norwalk and take advantage of the festivals and don't want to pay for parking, so they end up looking for open spaces and and other and and, you know, in in neighborhoods is really close by to the venue. So are you saying that that there is no law or 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 regulation of books that prevents that? And if it if there is, then on your point, Mr. Travers, are you saying there's no mechanism to enforce it? Like, what is what's the disconnect here?
Yeah, I'll start and then Jim will hop in, I think.
Okay, thanks.
So so my point wasn't so much if there was like the, you know, the Norwalk Yacht Club or Boat Club was having a big event. It would be more so like, an example, like, say that people were parking for the East Norwalk Train Station, but they were parking on all the residential streets and they didn't live on those streets and they were driving from Westport or something like that and parking. That's how this program would be addressed. It wouldn't really meant to deal with like a weekend festival that happens every year. That's, I mean, that's more than likely that stuff you're just going to have to deal with if if you're impacted with that, but.
Because other neighborhoods around Norwalk are also affected in that way. The South Norwalk Train Station. Yep. No, all the surrounding streets around there. So.
East Norwalk was just identified in that specific plan, but it that that issue has come up in South Norwalk. It came up when the mall was under construction because a lot of the mall contractors were actually parking in the residential neighborhoods. So it's not the first time, but East Norwalk was the first one to have it in a plan to say, hey, this is something the city should look at.
So should other neighborhoods use it as a blueprint?
Yeah, I think what we need to develop is something that is citywide, J J.
Citywide.
Yes.
And so and so just to follow up on my initial question is how would that be enforced?
So the, you know, what we what is what is standard in in many communities that do it, it it you register your license plate, right? And then it's though and then the the easy ease of operation is through a license plate reader, the parking authority would be able to drive down the street, then identify the street, the the vehicles that were registered versus the vehicles that that were not. And then, you know, so that's typically how, you know, more of the programs get enacted, you know, in our research now.
And I can tell you that we have that same program in East Norwalk already near the train station for years. As Mr. Travers has said, it was ad hoc, but it's still active. There are signs. You can email the parking authority. They will enter your license into a database. I still get regular emails confirming that mine is still in there. You can only have three vehicles registered per unit. And you can add guest vehicles. I've seen in other cities where you get guest placards to hang, you know, up to two or something like that. Of course, there was no enforcement behind it because the parking authority has talked about. But that's exactly what has been sort of halfway in place around the East Norwalk Train Station. And it doesn't mean that there wouldn't be benefits to it elsewhere in the system, but it was in this plan for East Norwalk T O D. I'm sorry, Bryce. You know, you've had your hand up. I'm exhausted. We all are, right?
Yep.
Indeed.
Go ahead, Bryce.
Yeah, my question might have been answered already for that exact reason of like, I don't know, we're we're a little bit tired here and I missed this. So is the implementation or the the idea or maybe a common practice that the permits are restricted to a given street or they something where people who live in a specific district have access to park on subset of streets or residents of Norwalk? Like, what's the what's the scoping of that usually look like?
Typically, it's street by street.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
All right.
At a meeting a few months ago, I think you guys were talking about needing to add this to an R F P to get it to work, the Parking Authority Enforcement. Is that part of this plan?
We we're currently next week having interviews for parking operators. So yes, it's in part of part of the plan.
It's going to be in the R P. Wonderful. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jim.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate your time and your patience.
No problem.
We have one other item. Will the other the other two items we had will will hold for our next meeting. Approval of minutes of April third. And I have a motion. Tammy moves. Is there a second? Please. Okay, Anna seconded. Just with a show of hands, all in favor? J J.
I'm standing.
Okay.
I I have to read all this first and then go back, then go backwards.
Okay, it sounds like we don't have we don't we don't. We don't have enough votes to approve it. We'll we'll deal with it our next meeting. Go ahead. Steve, any final comments before we all fall asleep?
No, thank you for the extra fifteen minutes and saved Jim some grief, so thank you.
Happy to do it. Okay, can I have a oh, remind you, our next meeting is not May first. We have changed. We changed. We agreed to change it at our last meeting. It's May eighth. So see you all on May eighth. With that, motion to adjourn. Anna makes the motion. I'll assume that Chapin seconds, all those in favor. Have a good night.
Good night.
Have a good night.